I'd like to leave you some prayer, please.
Yes, sir. Come and follow me. Thank you for this day. Thank you for this time you've given us here today. Thank you for each and every one calls Franklin County home, those that visit. We ask you would help us today have wisdom, knowledge, and understanding how to do what's right, not just for today, but for every tomorrow that you will give us, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda will be approval, let's see, no approval, payment of county bills?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Mathis, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Next will be Department Director's report, Mr. Howard Neighbors, Superintendent of Public Work.
Good morning, Commissioners. How y'all doing?
All right.
Just got a couple of items, which all were, we've been cutting grass throughout the county and also been cleaning cupboards and cleaning ditches also, so. Got storm season coming up, so. We're riding all the county out, checking all ditches, cupboards, anything that needs to be cleaned, we doing it.
How about a question, Commissioners, will you through? Good morning. Let's get to item number two of my report. I receive a complaint from Mr. Donnie Mathis, 15 of 1584 Peachtree Road in Atlantic Color. Mr. Mathis is complaining that after a rain event, standing water remains in a ditch located next to his property for two days and the standing water attracts mosquitoes. Mr. Neighbors and I were able to drive the entire area and discuss some of the other flooding issues in that area commonly known as Southland. I recommend that you authorize the engagement of due berry engineers to see if there's a solution to the flooding and stormwater issue for that entire area and determine an estimated cost. Commissioners, I, with good mind, I cannot try and fix Mr. Mathis' problem specifically because that will affect other neighbors and might turn their flooding issues worse. There's a lot of things going on out there. You know, the level of the river, that determines sometimes how long water stands. We all know that area has a high water table. Where I live, I have a high water table because my sewer is like a hill. You see what I'm saying? So there's a lot of things going on there that we need, I need somebody a lot more smarter than me in that field to figure out for us. And that's why I'm asking you guys to allow me to engage.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lockley, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any further discussion?
Just one statement, Mr. Chairman. What our job is, is trying to alleviate the problem, but at the same time not causing problems down, down the road or down other areas for other things. Because I have to tell you, I can remember before Southland was developed out there, it wasn't nothing but cypress trees. Now, when you see cypress trees and bay trees on land, it's wet. Okay? So, I mean, like I said, I seconded Mr. Lockley's motion, but, you know, be mindful that we cannot push water on somebody else's property.
And I ask all the neighbors out there, including Mr. Mathis, to be very patient. This is not something that's going to be solved in a week, in a month. This is, this is a long study here because it's a lot of property and a lot of flooding issues we gotta deal with.
Mike, they did, the engineers done all this probably about eight years ago.
Okay.
The elevation of the property, like the airport, airports at 20 foot. Most of that property out there in Southland and Paradise Lane, all that property is flat and elevation is about 11 foot. Some of it is 10 foot. So you gotta be careful. And another thing is behind Mr. Mathis' house, all that area, all the way to Tilton Road, all tries to come to the river this way.
Okay.
So all that water's coming off somebody else's private land and coming towards, trying to get to the river. If you look at the ditch in front of Tommy Pelleton's house, see how deep that and big that ditch is?
Yes, sir.
That's trying to drain all that water that we're speaking of, plus all the water coming off the airport. The airport's got all that, all the runways and stuff, so that water ain't gonna soak in the ground. It's gonna run off somewhere and it runs off into these ditches that we're talking about.
So that area's.
So if that, so if the, the elevation of the land is like this and you're trying to drain it uphill, the further this way you go, the deeper you have to go. Now, there's ditches by my house that are probably six foot deep. So if a kid fell in it, you know what's gonna happen?
Yeah.
So in order to drain even more water, you're gonna have to go even deeper. And if you're not careful, you'll go so deep that all the water that comes off the airport will turn around and run back the other way. It's, it's a quagmire. It's an issue, and it's not just the issue here. It's the issue in Carabel, it's the issue in East Point, it's the issue all over this county. There ain't no hills, it's all pretty much flat. I live out there too. There's a ditch probably four and a half foot deep in front of my house and the water don't never run out of the ditch. Eventually, the water table has to go down where the water will percolate.
Yeah.
So that's, you know, that's, we can have the engineers look at it. I'm not saying that, but I'm telling you, it's already been done. And there ain't a whole lot, there's two places you can drain water to the river. That's between Bay City and Breakaway Road, right there. Like where the old railroad track used to be, there's one big ditch that comes under there and one comes under Tommy Pelleton's. Then you got one the other way that goes out into the bay. Those are only three big ditches that take water to the river, which is where it's naturally trying to go. And if you get a tropical storm or hurricane where it rains for three or four days, my yard and everybody else's yard there is gonna be flooded. Until the water table goes down, until it has a chance to drain off, which takes days, I don't know how you're gonna do it no faster.
But we do have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor? All opposed? A motion carries.
Thank you for that, because that helps, that'll help Clay in his research.
You see, now what?
Okay, we have one more item, item number 13. On Friday, I was informed that Mr. David Morse, by Mr. David Morse of Florida Forest Service, that a logging crew is back on rocking. He stated, and I quote, "The crew is cutting on the interior sale of the SFR 172 between Jeff Sanders' Road and County Road 67. The haul trucks will ingress egress on forest roads without impacting Jeff Sanders. At some point during harvest operations, the crew will need to use Jeff Sanders' Road to access timber along the road." He said he'll keep me updated as to when they need to use Jeff Sanders' Road.
Y'all know I live on this road. And it's five miles to the highway. The only thing that I ask is for the road department to keep a check on it and to minimize the traffic on Jeff Sanders as good as what you can because Jeff Sanders is not designed to take heavy, heavy log truck traffic, just like Mill Road wasn't and all that, so just keep an eye on it.
All right, you let me know and then I'll, I'll call David if I have to.
You got anything else, Mr. Neighbors?
No, that's what I said.
Anything from the board for Mr. Howard? We are gonna continue cleaning ditches as you referenced earlier.
Yeah, we, we clear them and it, that road by his house that goes under that paving is 18-inch pipe. And when you get a lot of rain, which I had some pictures, which was back in June, I mean, all 98, burglar, everything was flooded, my yard. But that water flowed, I mean, it blew water through there and it took about two days for, you know, for it to run off and the water table went down, so. But if you get six or seven inches of rain, I don't care what kind of pipes, cupboards, you're gonna flood, so.
Okay. Anything else from the board for Mr. Neighbors? Thank you, Howard. Next will be Mr. Finally Davis, Solid Waste Director.
Good morning, Board.
Morning.
One item here for you all this morning. I did also want to let you know that I've been training 14 through 17 in Gainesville. What I have on my report here is St. George Allen Lighthouse Basketball Court. The Lighthouse Basketball Court needs to be resurfaced and the cracks need to be patched. I have received an estimate from Premier Circuit Solutions in the amount of $7,775. Our goal is to find available funding in this year's budget, partner rate budget. If the fund is not available in our current budget, we'd be seeking funding in next year's budget. I just want to let you know it's in bad shape, so if you get any calls on it, we are aware of it.
Yeah, we've gotten some calls. I hadn't said nothing about it. I try not to mention every, you know, slew of calls I get, but yeah.
Yes, sir. All right. That's all I have this morning.
Anything for the board from Mr. Davis?
Yeah, how we doing with the basketball court out here?
I spoke with Jason White this morning and he's running a little bit behind, but he say he should be here to get started on the first of next week.
He say how long it gonna take him?
He say, I told him you want to know whether it take a month and I told him no, so he got to get it done. For that month.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Davis, from the board? Thank you, Mr. Davis.
We are working on the irrigation for the soccer field, so it's coming along pretty good.
That'd be good and get some, get some solid on it and get the water going to it so they can be able to use it come October.
Okay.
Anything else from the board? Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Thank you all.
Next will be Ms. Pam Brunel, Emergency Management Director.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I have four action items on my report today. Request the board to sign a letter of support for Weatherstam. I think he's trying to get enough support from the counties that he's put Weatherstam in to try to move forward with getting the state to put Weatherstam on other bridges throughout the state.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lockley, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
Second is approval and signing of the update MOA with the Franklin County School for Transportation Disadvantage. That's the use of their school buses during evacuation for people in this county that do not have transportation. We've had this agreement in place since 2005 and we just need to update it to make sure that we don't get questioned by FEMA. We've always paid them and then we seek reimbursement for that.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Mathis, second by Commissioner Lockley. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Uh huh.
Ms. Pam, in what you just stated, we're already doing what the state's trying to enact, correct?
No, it's two separate things. What the state, what FDM is saying is FEMA is now saying that school boards cannot seek reimbursement theirself for sheltering costs.
They have to do that.
And our county is lucky, we don't have any shelters. So all our general population goes to basically wherever they can find a shelter open. Now, our special needs is dedicated to Leon County High and so is our transportation disadvantage. It's, they've gone back and forth, but what they're saying is FEMA's not going to budge from that. That counties are going to have to pay the school boards for their costs and then the county seek reimbursement, which means the county will pay that extra 12 and a half percent for the school board for using their, their schools.
Do you have to pay the other shelters if we use them?
That's not been brought up and I really, me and Alan discussed that. I don't see how they can really keep a good record of who comes and who goes in there. That would be extremely task-taking.
It would be, my fear is that it's all gonna start rolling downhill and bigger counties are gonna say, why are we burdening the, because the county commissioners ultimately is responsible for outcost. The county commission of any county is now gonna be responsible for paying all the shelter costs and they have to pay that money upfront to the school system, then turn around and get reimbursed. So I can see a big county saying, well, if we have 5,000 residences of the county here, they need to pay that. I could, I mean, it's gonna be hard to keep track, I agree, but if it really becomes an issue, I can see them saying, you sign in, you say you're residents' county, we'll buy, we'll send that bill to the county.
We do have a motion and a second on the floor, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? A motion carries.
Third thing is request approval for, from the board, for us to go out for RFQ for our special needs transportation. Back during Irma, we found out that Croon's Transportation, although he said that he would move our special needs, canceled his contract on us and we had to do an emergency MOU with the Gov. Franklin Transportation Disadvantage. So by the new regulations, we have to bid that out.
Is that me?
Sir. We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Lockley. Any further discussion?
Will it be ready before thomsen?
We're gonna do our best. I mean, it's, it's task-taking for us to have to, like with our last one, we had to, I went through 125 different vendors searching through on that website to see which of those vendors actually were contractors for what we were looking for. So we're, we're working on it.
All right, try to get it done.
Especially is a, is a very difficult thing for us because our transportation corridor distance to go is so long. So not only do you people have their own medical issues we have to attend to, so we have to get them out ahead of time and sometimes they're not ready to go, it's a nightmare. Unfortunately, we probably have, what, 30 people on the special needs?
We have 75, but we don't move that many.
Right, so we, you know, we move 15 to 30, something like that. So it's not a big number, but you have to get them ready ahead of time because you gotta get them out of the way and just, the logistics, it's a nightmare.
We really, I've had Jeannie and them going out to see their special needs patients to really sit and talk with them and emphasize that shelters are a place of last resort. That if you've got family or anywhere else to go, that's where you need to go because a shelter's not really, if you're sick, where you wanna be.
Pam, another issue is the last little storm event we had was people calling in when the hurricane, the storm's two hours away, oh, I got special needs. Well, we need to know way ahead of that because, as I was out there with you last time, the special needs van had done gone. And then you got one person saying, you know, but she wouldn't leave without her dog. Well, you can't carry the dog, you know what I'm saying? So you, you have to have all this done in preparation ahead of time.
And that is basically the responsibility if a doctor, doctors and clinics and other transportation disadvantaged, if by statute, it's their job to inform their patients of special needs and actually, the patient can actually go into the portal and register theirself with the state. But the la, you know, of course, we had that with the hospital turning that one loose and they showing up on our doorsteps and really wasn't supposed to go into a general shelter because they were contagious. So we pushed that, but like I said, I've got Jeannie and them going door to, going out, her and Nicole Sandoval is going out to the houses of the ones that we have on the list and sitting down and, you know, trying to make them realize that it, you know, they need a plan, that they really don't want to go to a shelter. But, you know, we're still leaving them on our list, even if they say they got fan, friends and family, we still make that call to them, that call down list, to make sure that they really have somewhere to go.
It get difficult if you get a mandate to it.
Yeah, I, I mean, yeah. Well, again, you know, Commissioner, we cannot make them leave and we, you know, had some, some of the elder landlord thought that we were physically gonna come and remove them and was hiding their cars. I mean, we can't do that. I mean, it's in their best interest to leave when we tell them to, but, and they are breaking the law if they don't leave when we do a mandatory evacuation. But we physically, we don't have the manpower or the space to go and physically remove someone from their home. They're on their own then, as we tell them, you know, when the water and the wind come up, we can't come get you, it's too late then.
Right. We do have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
Fourth item is request approval from the board to go out for RFQ for debris monitoring and debris removal.
So moved.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lockley?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mathis. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? A motion carries.
And that's it, unless y'all have something for me.
Anything from the board for Ms. Pam? Thank you, Pam. Next is Mr. Eric Lovestrian. I got an email saying he wouldn't be here today, he had to go to some training.
Yes, sir.
So it, it did send his report and if board members have any questions they can get with Mr. Lovestrian, straighten that out. We're now at public comment, three-minute time limit. Please come forward, state your name for the record.
Morning Commissioners, Alan Pfeifer, concerned citizens Franklin County. During public comments, I wanted to remind that the millage rate has been increased for the previous two or three years on a rising county tax digest and that there has been a continuation of some departments and constitutional spending every penny of their budget in the last two months to justify their current spending levels and to prime the pump for further increases. We anticipate continued increases to the county tax digest with an improving economy and I for one don't want to see a repeat of the last cycles, last cycles massive spending increases and return to confiscatory property taxes. We actually had people paying in the 30s and as much as 40, $45,000 on alligator point for property taxes for one year. That's now gone and we've driven off a lot of people. We've, we've, a lot of investors have left Franklin County. It's because of the lack of concern for high property taxes. Your instructions in the annual budget letter will determine how this budget, this year's budget workshop goes. Please consider this letter as your best opportunity to ensure fairness and discipline in Franklin County government. This is how you, the budget process starts with the letter. So the letter, please spend as much time and energy on that as you deem appropriate so that we can have a good budget workshop cycle and a good result. We're approaching a $50 million budget, I think this year is $44 million and there'll be continued requests for increases across the board. Please, put the, put the effort into the letter as Ms. Shan, Ms. Commissioner Sanders talked about at the last county commission meeting. It's our, this is our best opportunity and thank you very much for letting me speak this morning.
Thank you. Any other public comments, please come forward, state your name for the record. If any more public comments, we'll move on. Ms., Madam Clerk? Oh, we got an open request for proposals, okay.
Well, no, it's not till 9:45.
Okay, you gotta hold off on that?
You can open them any time. Yeah, yeah, okay. This is, these are bids, there's money involved, so we're gonna open, read them aloud. This hopefully resolves an issue of, I'm on some decade now of Gulf trail boulevards, a road that got damaged, I forget how many years ago. This will be, hopefully, the final process to finish that relocation. I say that until the next one comes along, but this will take care of the one project that's been outstanding for years and years and years. So I'm opening up bids for the relo, paving, the final pave, paving and building of the last section of Gulf trail boulevard. So y'all have bid sheets in front of you there, the first one, the last one. So you already got, so you'll, you'll. This first one is from North Florida Construction, North Florida Construction. North Florida Construction, I think it's out of Tallahassee, but I'll show you. It says Clarksville, Florida, Clarksville, Florida. And their total base bid is 174,008.11 and 50 cents. 174, 8.11 and 50 cents. Yes, sir. And, good, 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 good. Next one is Piget Asphalt and Site Work out of Crawfordville. Piget Asphalt and Site Work out of Crawfordville. Their total base bid, 113,392 and 50 cents. 113,392 and 50 cents. Third one is CWR Contracting, CW Roberts Contracting, out of Tallahassee. Total base bid, 273,449. 273,449 and no cents. Last one is Robertson Roberts, Robertson Roberts, out of Tallahassee. 212,509. 212,509 and no cents. And I recommend, turns over to our engineering firm for evaluation on the bids, make sure they're accurate and complete. This is a project being funded by FEMA from a PW that I believe we still, so the initial allocation money will come out of the Ballpoint Trust Fund, then we'll get reimbursed from FEMA minus 12 and a half percent because this is one of the projects that was done from a previous hurricane, so the governor's waiver does not apply to this PW. So we ultimately, just using simple math, let's say our, just using this as an example, $200,000, let's say was the bid, so 12 and a half percent of that is $25,000. So we will have to take 25, ultimately, we'll have $25,000 reduction from the Ballpoint Trust Fund because that'll be our match and we do not get reimbursed.
Who we gonna turn this over to?
To the engineering firm.
Okay.
I got stuff on the thing.
Lot of difference.
Big difference, yeah, so I'm not sure that.
That's what I'm saying, there's a lot of difference between these two big paving companies, 100 thou, over $100,000 between these two companies.
So we ought to make sure that they bid on the same thing.
Yeah, something, something's funny, cause, yeah.
Please for the board, turn it over to the engineers?
So moved. Second.
We got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lockley, second by Commissioner Mathis. Any further discussion? All those.
Just tag it, that's a new company, that's a small company.
Well, there used to be a Piget Construction, I don't, I, this might be.
I think it's the same people.
Same people. Okay, out of Crawfordville.
Any further discussion?
Just one thing. It may be because Piget, Piget is located in Meadow. It may be the cost is not gonna take them as far to bring the material, I don't know. So you really need to check on that and see.
Yeah, possibly, they also don't have asphalt plants, so they have to, they're gonna have to buy their asphalt.
Yeah, they have to buy the asphalt from somebody.
It may be that they didn't, anyway, let's check. So this project, Clay will report, I will not, I will not be here at the next board meeting, so Clay will report through Michael Morone on the, on the, on bid situation.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda will be Madam Clerk.
Good morning Commissioners. You have my report and I just wondered if there's any special instructions y'all wish for me to include in the letter. If there's nothing today, if anybody thinks of anything, just let us know. I think the letters will be going out this next week.
I'm not saying nothing, I said in that last meeting.
I mean, if you don't send some direction, then you're gonna have increases in every department and everything else. So the board needs to.
We need to tell them no increases, like we always did.
I mean, it's a pleasure to board, though.
And don't, don't look at, you know, if.
You want us to do their side?
We need to go ahead and get it out of here because if, if we don't, then you're gonna come up to the board meeting and somebody's gonna be surprised. You know, my thinking is we need to do a cost of living adjustment, a COLA. So how do we take care of that? I mean, I don't want a, you know, right off the bat raise, but let's, let's, we got to deal with that.
I'll take, can we keep those two things separate and let's talk about the COLA if you don't mind? Like at a future meeting, I mean, in the past, we basically sent a letter holding everybody to.
But I don't, my, I'm not trying to cut you short, but we don't need to have no increases in their salaries, in their budget. And a lot of them has the increases in the salary because, in their budget.
Yes, so last year, we just held it to the previous budget, so we keep it at that for now. And if, I think you guys, correct me if I'm wrong, somebody, if they have a capital expense, they can come and discuss it with you, try and justify it with you, but do not include it in their budget. Let's hold their budget to the same as it currently is. Isn't that what we did last year? Anybody?
Press is active over here.
Yeah, I mean, I would, if you would look at my, that's my recommendation.
Well, the only thing I'd say is if there is a capital expense, I'd say they need to put it in there so we know how to figure the millage before we come with that expense.
You have that, you can't change a millage after a certain.
Right, so I mean, I would say if somebody has, you know, equipment or something like, I'd say, ask them to put it in and you can always take it out.
Well, and so many times in the past, they haven't done that and then we get into the first month of the budget and we have to deal with it.
Or in the middle of the budget year, when you're halfway through spending, someone comes out, he just trumps.
Right, right.
You have to search that.
And then we're scrambling to search.
I think what we did in the past is, is we said if you needed something like that, to put it in, but to justify.
Justify.
Give y'all justification in their request.
Is there any way they can indicate it? I'm asking like separately in some way in the budget, so it stands out, so that. I'm asking, like separately in some way in the budget, so it stands out so that we could, yeah.
Yeah, we could do that.
How about, how about if we, if any department here needs something special, let us know next, next meeting, that we will know.
Oh, that's a good idea, but let me see how you know.
Well, budgets are due June first.
Okay.
That's enough time, that's a good time. Send, send a memo out to all the departments and do you expect a capital, a capital expenditure in this upcoming fiscal year?
If they do, come before the board next meeting, will you do that, Mike, or you contact all the?
Other than that, keep, keep the budget.
Yeah, keep the budget as it is.
Okay.
That way we'll know it.
Okay, well, we can do that.
That way we can deal with it, you know.
Okay. And if y'all change your mind on something else, you let us know and Aaron can figure it in, I guess, before we had our budget hearings, or.
And the thing about it is, I like to lay everything out to where we know what we're facing, you know what I mean? I don't like surprises. And I like to, I like to know that we can take care of people at the same time.
Mr. Chairman, while we're discussing some of this stuff, it's not completely related to it, but it's a thought that I've been having for a while. I'd really love to see, especially like our road department, our, some of our county departments, I'd love to see us come with some kind of three or five-year plan of them knowing what they're gonna be facing the next three to five years, what their needs are gonna be, what kind of, you know, so it is more laid out and we do kind of know what's, what's going on and what to expect and where we're at. It's not necessarily part of this conversation, but it's attached to it.
Well, and, and I agree with you Commissioner Jones because I know one, one expenditure that this county's gonna have in the next few years and that is office space for the road department. That house that they're living in now is made back in the forties. And so, I mean, I'm, I'm being serious about this and they have to have an office. So we need to be looking at that to see what do we wanna do, do we wanna get, or does the county wanna get a modular unit and destroy the house, the house now? But that's, that's gonna be something coming up because that's always been the office there, you know?
I'm not trying to be funny about that, but you do realize if you mosquito the department, their lab is in a restroom. I'm just, I mean.
That's right, that's right.
We gotta think about that in the future.
That's what, that's what we're talking about, I think that's what Commissioner Jones is talking about.
Maybe we have all the department heads be here next, at the next meeting, which most of them are here anyway, and you kind of have this discussion and they would still have time to turn in their budgets by June first, after that meeting. Okay, so.
So I probably need a motion, but I wanna be clear, so the instructions to the clerk is we're gonna send a letter to keep your budget as it was last year, but ask them to come, we're gonna have a discussion at the next meeting about capital needs that they might have.
Yeah, they got some big stuff.
Yeah. Is that?
That's what it sounds like.
That's what it sounds like to me. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, we need that direction by, by motion of the board.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lockley, second by Commissioner Sanders, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
And that concludes my report, anything from the board for me?
Mr. Chairman?
Mm-hmm.
I've got one issue. Madam Clerk, when is our contract for county auditors for both the county and the hospitals, when is that up, do you know?
I, I really ca, I haven't looked at that contract, I can't remember how, do you remember, Mr. Schiller, how long that contract was for?
No ma'am, I do not.
I just, I think I'd, I'd have to call and check.
Well, can y'all, can you find out and let me know, because I'm gonna go ahead and bring this up. I'm not satisfied with the work that the auditors has been doing, both at the county level and at the hospital level. And I think we need to go back out on bids for county auditors and that's, you know, that's where I'm coming from.
I'm, I'm thinking we do, you know, a yearly contract, well, I can call my finance office and we can find out, could you do that, Lori? We'll find out and come back before this meeting's over.
Yeah, 'cause I'd like to take care of it today.
Okay, well, I'll come back up when I have that information later on.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
We have a motion to second, I don't think we voted yet.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next will be Mr. Alan Pierce for store coordinator report.
Good morning, I appreciate it forward. First item is, and it's all in your board package, my board copies with letters of support issued to City Care Bell for their three Triumph applications, the city requests a total of one point four eight million dollars in Triumph funding. The city had a fourth one that they decided not to, not to submit a complete application for, so they did do three. Inform the board that Island G Park is scheduled for construction completion on June thirtieth. We are tentatively scheduling a public dedication on Friday, July sixth, more information will follow on a later day. We've already done item number three regarding the school and sheltering. Item number four, inform the board that I have resubmitted a new cost estimate to FEMA for the repairs to Alligator Drive to its pre-hurricane Hermine condition. I also participated in another FEMA site visit to Alligator Point on April twenty-fourth. PW that the county signed in March, and I sort of said in March of, I don't know what year it is, I guess it was two thousand seventeen. For some three point two million is still under review by FEMA in Atlanta. However, since the submission of the new cost estimate last week, FEMA staff in Atlanta say they are working on the PW, so I have not yet contacted our federal delegation. If I do not have a positive response from FEMA by May seventh, then I will contact our federal delegation as directed by the board at the last meeting. Attached is revised cost estimate is less than a hundred thousand dollars different from the one submitted almost twenty months ago. FEMA is still reviewing the HMGP costs associated with installing sheet piles to provide additional protect for the road, but at this time, I'm still expecting approximately three point two million dollars of FEMA funds for the repair of the road. Item number five, inform the board that Dubear is working on the design of Alligator Drive because we have a separate PW and that's the number four sixty-one from FEMA specifically for the design costs. This PW has been approved and funds obligated by FEMA. As we all work on Alligator Point, we are using the Ballpoint Trust Fund to pay the invoice and then we will reimburse the trust fund when we receive FEMA funds. PW four sixty-one is for some three hundred forty-four thousand dollars for design costs. Fortunately, this PW is included in the governor's waiver, so the county's FEMA match is only six and a quarter percent, not the usual twelve and a half percent, and that'll also apply to the three point two million. So we are saving a great deal of money by getting that partial waiver. Five, file board the completion documents for acquisitions of capital city property on Alligator Point. To my dollars, the project is complete, the road department did a great job with clearing it up and so we own six acres of land down there and it's available for the county for limited uses, but it's public property now. Item number six, inform the board that Apalachico Reserve Aner is extending the existing breakwater living shoreline. It was initially started to protect Sawyer Street on St. George Island about fifteen years ago. The work does not require board action as it is out in the water, but the action will help protect the last remaining section of Sawyer Street currently exposed to wave action from the bay. I inspected the site last week with Aner staff at the request of Commissioner Jones. Aner may also install a breakwater living shoreline at the end of Howell Street on the island where erosion is eating at the street end, they're looking at that, I'll probably come back to the board with more information on that. Item number seven, inform the board that Florida's Great Northwest is making an application to Triumph for funds that would be available to all eight impacted counties for what they're calling Regional Investment Stimulation Enhancement Fund, or RISE. The RISE fund would be used for adverbal tax rebates to companies competing, creating jobs in any of the eight counties. However, the rebate is only for the non-available portion, which are the school taxes, as the county share would be waived. So if, if a company were moved into Franklin County and we were to supply for RISE funds, the county's shared property taxes would not be paid, the school would get reimbursed. The concept is that by waiving property taxes for companies expanding into the county, there would be other property value increases that would make up for the specific parts that receives the exemption. The program is structured, so, so the program is structured so that the company would pay the school adverbal taxes upfront and then the company would seek reimbursement from Triumph. FGN is requesting letters of support from all eight counties. I have called Wacoa and Gulf County to see if they are going to write letters of support and they are still reviewing the RISE proposal. Since I will not be at the next board meeting on May fifteenth, I have attached a draft summary letter of support written by Santa Rosa County and I've attached a one-page summary of the RISE program. If the board members in their discussion with other neighboring county commissioners decide Franklin County should write a letter of support, then Michael Morone could use a draft letter as a guide. Franklin County is covered by the RISE application whether we write a letter of support or not. So they're moving forward with that, trying to represent all of the counties is what Florida's Great Northwest is trying to position themselves, represent all of us. And I hate to run through my report so rapidly, oh, I have one more item, I'm sorry, and then I did an addendum, and this actually is for board actions. Board action to utilize Highlight Contractor as a contractor for the remarking of the runways on Apalachico Regional Airport. FDOT has just executed the first of two JPAs for remarking the runways. Airfield marking is a specialized field and the contractors who want to do this work have to comply with FDOT and FAA requirements. FDOT sets the criteria for the work to be done and the fees to be charged and the contractors have to meet these state standards as they apply to all airports in Florida. Highlight is on the state bid list for remarking runways and Jason Puckett and John Collins of AFCON both recommending the board accept Highlight as a contractor to remark the runways at the airport. If FDOT will allow it, runway one eight three six will also be remarked if there are enough funds. This project is a hundred percent funded with FDOT funds. Board action, and Highlight did actually work at the airport before, they've come out and given us an estimate, so we're in the money.
Pleasure to board.
So moved, what do you want?
Uh, there's, there are a company that does, works statewide, I can't tell you where the headquarters is, but they're in the state of Florida, Commissioner, but it's a very specialized field.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lockley.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sanders, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
The remarking includes, believe it or not, what makes the airfield so dark from the air is mold grows on the concrete. And so the remarking, actually, they, these airfields, as you know, they're a hundred, they're a mile long and two hundred yards wide, two hundred feet wide, and they, they clerks the whole, the whole runway, they lift the whole runway and then renumber it, so it's a pretty big project. And you have to do it a certain way according to DOT criteria, so you, they'll be out there.
Okay. Anything else from the board for Mr. Pierce?
One question, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, we've had some discussions about the opportunity zones.
Yes.
And now I've, I've got the map pulled up here on the opportunity zones for Franklin County that the governor designated. It has the whole eastern part of Franklin County and nothing from Care Bell West, why is that?
I did call Gray Dodge, who was my contact with the DEO, and he, but I lost the message with him and he and I missed each other, so I don't have an answer to that, but I, I had a brief conversation with him, he was gonna research it. All he could, all he could tell me in the brief conversation was the governor, you know, used his best judgment on the areas that he thought was the most needed, but I don't know why, we applied for the whole county, why only part got in, I don't know.
But, it don't make no sense because that's all, just about, well, it is, all have paid tail and there's no opportunity standing.
I, I, we applied for the whole county, I.
Stay on top of it, Alan, and let us find out, let us know when you find out really something because I was concerned, because if you'll look, I've got the map right here, Calhoun and Liberty is all the way down that Apalachico River stretch, right there, and then, see it right there? And then there's ours, right there. And it, it doesn't even include the airport or.
That part of the river though is not even in Franklin County. That's all north of Franklin County.
But see, that's what I'm saying, it's, it's nothing. See, I thought that was gonna be part of that logistics thing and.
Well, my, my, my response is without researching anything, so it's dangerous for me to make this comment, but I will, is that it's possible the governor's office said, okay, if you got, you have a, you have an economic incentive on the freight logistics zone on that part of the county, we're gonna give an economic incentive on the other part of the county where it did not have the freight logistics zone, I mean, I don't know if that's what they were thinking or not.
We need to find out.
Hang on, I think the board needs to direct staff to write a letter and try to get some information. Alan's gonna be out of town for the next month.
I'll make that motion to direct staff.
And how to figure it out, with, with staff before you leave and give them your contact information where they can send a letter out requesting more information on that.
And clarification.
So generally, Gray Dodge and DEO, and I'll try to call them this afternoon.
Okay.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Lockley, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, not motion carries, anything else from Mr. Pierce from the board? Thank you, Alan, board recessed five minutes.